Good morning, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We'd like to get a roll call. Carol, if you give us a roll call.
Amanda Klein. Amy Cole.
You have to answer, please, alright?
Bingie Forrest.
Here.
James Tripp.
Present.
Jennifer Hodgson.
Here.
Justin Eastwood. Kelly Weaver. Mary Maltzby. And Worth Forbes.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go into closed session. Worth Forbes.
I make a motion to go into closed session. Pursue it to General Statute one four three three one eight dot eleven. For the following purposes under subsection A three to consult with our attorney. To preserve the attorney-client privilege. And then to consider and give instructions concerning judicial actions titled JLB Pitt County Schools. Twenty-five EDC zero two zero seven four.
Is there a second?
A second to motion.
Been moved by Worth Forbes, seconded by Bingie Forrest? Any questions?
I, we have, we have three board members trying to get into the Zoom or the Google Meet. Just want to let somebody know that needs to let them in. Kelly are all just in the group text saying they are at being asked to let in. They're waiting to get in, so just want to let you know.
Do they have the right link? Let's see.
It was moved by Worth Forbes, seconded by Bingie Forrest to go into closed session. Amy Cole.
Yeah.
Amanda Klein. Amanda Klein.
She hasn't gotten on yet.
Alright. Bingie Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer Hodges?
Here.
Justin Eastwood? Kelly Weaver?
Yeah.
Mary Maltzby?
Yes, Mary Nobles-Maltzby.
Worth Forbes?
Yes.
Motion, Carol? We now have our. Amanda Klein? You've muted.
She's way down.
She can unmute herself.
You have to unmute yourself, Amanda.
I'm a professional lip reader and she said it won't let her. The mic is off due to meeting size. Can she use the chat?
We're back in the open session this morning. The board has approved the settlement of a claim brought by a parent on behalf of a student regarding the delivery of EC services. The term of the agreement consists of confidential student information that cannot be shared. However, the board can share that they agreed to pay the attorney fees in the amount of five thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Our consent agenda. We have consent items. One through seven. Well, one through eleven. One through eleven. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
A second motion, second of motion, Mary Nobles-Maltzby.
Moved by Worth Forbes, seconded by Mary Maltzby to approve our consent agenda. Any questions? All in favor, please answer to your name. Amanda Klein?
Yep.
Amy Cole?
Yeah.
Bingie Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer Hodges?
Yeah, I think you said my name, there's a lot of sound going on, but yes.
Kelly Weaver?
Yes.
Mary Maltzby?
Yes.
Worth Forbes?
Yes.
Motion, Carol?
Good morning, everyone. I bring for the board today the budget amendment number two. You'll see that this very first slide, we have it broken down.
At this time, we're going to confidential items, which will require board approval.
That's part of the consent, so we've ruled then.
Alright.
Now, Mike.
So I have before the board today, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment number two. You'll see that this first slide, we have a breakdown by fund. You'll see the total budget at three hundred and fifty-nine million. You'll see that the state is at fifty-seven percent of our total budget, the local at seventeen, federal at ten. And then also your child nutrition is at five point four percent, nineteen point three million. You'll see that just primarily our funding is made up of mostly state funding, which is most of our positions, with the local being the other side. With a lot of our facilities and extra supplemental positions as well. The next slide shows the breakdown, once again, it's at three hundred and fifty-nine million. You'll see that the instructional services are currently at seventy-one percent, which equates to essentially for every dollar that we spend. Seventy-one percent of that dollar goes directly into the classroom. Then your system-wide support services are currently at fifty-six million, which is sixteen percent. This is everything that occurs to get, to be able to get that instruction into the classroom. Facilities, all the actual other positions that we need to maintain the facilities as well. Then you'll see our capital outlay is right at twenty-one point one seven five million. The first one is the state fund. You'll see our original budget resolution was at a hundred and ninety-three million. Amendment number one, you'll see we had five point five seven four million dollar increase. For amendment number two, we had a six point four one seven million dollar increase. Bringing that total budget for state fund at two hundred and five million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents. You'll see the, we just had some increases for amendment number two column. You'll see we had an increase of three point two million in instructional services. A small decrease in system-wide support services and then capital outlay of three point five million, which was specifically in regards to some governmental accounting standard board entries that we have to make for lease purchases. You'll see that this summarizes the actual programs that were affected by this net increase. You'll see that we had a few, such as instructional support, an increase of a hundred and six thousand. State technology at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar increase. Exceptional children at six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase. And then the safety and security grant of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then you'll see down at the bottom, the three point five million, that is just to actually have, to be able to have the budget to make us an accounting entry that's by the governmental, governmental accounting standard board. Just so I have the available budget. This puts that total per budget amendment number two at two hundred and five million per state. The local, you'll see that the original budget resolution was at fifty-nine point three two nine million. Amendment number one, we didn't have any net increase or decrease. For amendment number two, we had a net increase of two point eight three seven million. This brings a total amended budget for local to sixty-two point one six seven five ninety-one. You'll see we had a couple between the instructional services, we had a decrease. Going to system-wide support services, which is the facilities and everything it takes to be able to get the student into the classroom in instructional time. And then the non-program services, we had our red light funds that were moved over to our special revenue fund. And then the capital outlay, simply those accounting entries that we have to make with the governmental accounting standard board for any type of lease or subscription purchase that we have to record. An actual capital outlay expenditure for. The federal funds, you'll see the original budget resolution was twenty-six point eight one four million. Amendment number one, we had a net increase of six point one three million. Amendment number two, we had a net increase of four point four three nine million. And then that brings our total amended budget for federal fund at thirty-seven point three eight four million. You'll see, looking at amendment number two column, that the instructional services, we had a slight increase of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The system-wide support services at three hundred and fifty-one thousand. A slight decrease in non-program services at forty-seven thousand. And then, once again, the capital outlay, we have for some of the subscription purchases for software, we have to record an entry for it and I have to be able to have the available budget for the capital outlay expenditure associated with that. So that's where the four million you'll see for, to be able to allow for that expenditure, which is no net change to any type of fund balance for that entry. The federal funds, you'll see here listed below are a few of the items that we actually had increases for, you see IDA handicap, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase. Title one school improvement, we had an increase of two hundred and forty, forty thousand. We then, down at the bottom, you'll see the other financing source, just like the other funds. We had, we had to have the budget available to be able to allow for that capital outlay expenditure for the subscriptions of the softwares. So that brings our total amount of thirty-seven point three eight four million for federal. Special revenue funds, you'll see the original budget resolution was at fifteen point seven four nine million. Amendment number one, we only had a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase. For amendment number two, we had a three point nine nine three million dollar increase. This brings us to a total budget for special revenue of nineteen point eight six five. You see, we had a couple, as far as the instructional services, we had, for amendment number two column, we had an increase of two point six six five million. And then the system-wide support services of one million ninety-seven, which makes us primarily of that three point nine nine three. And then the next slide will show actually where, what it's attributable to. You see, original amendment number one, fifteen point eight seven two million. We had increases primarily, you see, three point nine nine three million down below. You'll see the red light funds are, they've been moved over to special revenue funds. And that, the budget associated with that was actually three point nine zero five million to be put into our grant fund to be housed in there. That brings our total budget amendment, amendment number two of nineteen point eight six five million. The capital funds, we had, going from the budget resolution, we started with fourteen million fifty. Amendment number two, or amendment number one, we had no change. Amendment number two, there was no net increase or decrease as well. The amended budget ended for capital fund at fourteen point zero five zero million with no change. The school, school nutrition, we, if you look at the original budget resolution, it had fifteen point nine one nine million for the original budget. Amendment number one, you'll see we had an increase of two million, where we were part of, part of a spin-down plan for some of the capital items. Then, as you see, amendment number two, we had an increase of one point seven nine six million. Being a portion of that revenue amendment number two column, we had some increase in revenues. And then also, we had an increase in actually using some fund balance, a part of that spin-down plan, they have, we have with the state for excess cash with the school nutrition fund. That brings our total amended budget right at nineteen point three one seven million for school nutrition. The trust and agency funds, which are community schools or after-school, you'll see. That's not the right slide. That's not the right slide. Yeah. I don't know if they just got copied. Do you want me to?
Your slides are not exactly with the booklet, is it?
No, this slide. I mean, I can just go, there is no change in trust and agency funds. Well, I can just, I can just move forward, I can move forward. I can do some, okay, so moving forward to this last amendment, I'll talk, the trust and agency fund, you'll see the total amount of one point one nine nine, or one point one nine nine million down below. For amendment number one, we didn't have any change. Amendment number two, we had no change. The amended budget for trust and agency, which is our community schools and after-school, remained the same budget going from the budget resolution to amendment number two. And then switching back over to this, or to the oversight of it, you'll see for the total budget, we were at three hundred and fifty-nine million down there in the bottom right corner for amended budget. As of six thirty twenty twenty-five, you'll see the total amended budget of eleven point eight two eight million for the operating funds. Then amendment number two, of seventeen point six eight seven million. Down below, you'll see the total, including school nutrition, is at nineteen point zero eight five million. Bringing that total amended budget to three hundred and fifty-nine million as of six thirty twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions within these slides?
Questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. On the red light funds. All litigation is over with that, and those are monies that we can now claim as ours, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
We do not owe anybody anything. And they have not been. We do not owe anybody anything, and they have not been owed back anything.
Correct, sir. We, we prevailed in that litigation and those are ours now to spend.
Okay, are, are, are those monies tied to anything?
No, well, currently, so we've, and as for that question, we've remitted all, we, uh, be, just because like our local appropriations to charter schools, we've already admitted those payments. So what is remaining is actually what's available, uh, to be used at the school's distribution.
Okay, okay.
That was one question I had, and thank you. Uh, second question I have, the vape funds. How much wa, was, was that and what are we doing with that?
We, I think originally we had about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, with that. Um, we, I don't believe we had for, let's see. For this particular one, we did not have any type of budget amendment to the, uh, to the actual jewel, or settlement funds. Um, we have spent, uh, um, a portion of those on some of the items for facilities with, uh, the vape detectors. Um, I could get back with you on what's remaining.
Okay.
The, what's, what's the remaining available for those settlement funds?
Did, did we supposed to be doing some type of educational stuff, reference vapes, according to that?
Uh, as far as I know, we, so far we've spent it on things that were with facilities, with the vape detectors and then, and then also they have a subscri, uh, subscription fees associated with those vape detectors as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other board members have questions? All in favor of the budget amendment? Please answer to your name. Or motion to approve?
Yeah.
The budget amendment?
Yes, please.
I, I move that we approve the budget amendment number two.
Moved by Benji's, their second?
Second.
Second by Worth. All in favor, please answer. Amanda Klein? Amanda Klein?
Uh, yeah.
Amy Cole?
Yeah.
Benji Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer Hodgson?
Yes.
Kelly Weaver?
Yes.
Mary Maltzby?
Yes.
Worth Forbes?
Yes.
Motion care? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I believe that is all we have for today. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Worth, second?
I second.
Second by Benji. All in favor, let it be known by your, as your name is called, Amanda Klein?
Yes, sir.
Amy Cole?
Yeah.
Benji Forrest?
Yes.
Jennifer Hodgson?
Yes.
Kelly Weaver?
Yes.
Mary Nobles-Maltzby?
Yes.
Worth Forbes?
Yes.
Motion care? We are closed.